Obviously, things didn't go as planned in the affairs. We know it didn't happen. The idea is that the 2020 city funds would be used for the 2021 fair. So we will need to enter into a new agreement that kind of outlines that we could do that at the first meeting in January. If the board requests staff to do that. Prior to that, Mayor had asked to have a GD fair added to the agenda for discussion amongst the board. So that is where we are at.
Okay, the, the reason I had called for a discussion is I was having a conversation just at random with Mr. Murphy and I'd asked him a question about the Fair Association. He said he really didn't know. And I said, you didn't know? I says, it says you're on the Board of Directors. Found out that he didn't. He's supposedly been on the Board of Directors for the last two years and he didn't, wasn't even aware he's, of the fact he was on the Board of, Board of Directors. We later found out that another person isn't on the Board of Directors, neither of the two have been to any of the board meetings. I had also heard previously, which I just kind of put aside because it was, I was never given any foundation for the accusation. But a former board member contended that some of the funds from the Fair Association were being diverted to personal use. I felt because of that, we should request records that are laid out in our contract agreements that we're entitled to receive. I thought we should receive records for the entire time we've been giving money to the associate, to the Fair Association to see if the funds have been used in accordance with the contracts. City Attorney felt that I had the right to ask for this year's contract. Seems like it was still active, but he questioned whether or not I had the right to ask for all years. And he's the one suggested we go to the board and see if the board wanted to review the records to see if the contracts have been honored.
I would add that Mike Todd did send over the 2020 reconciliation for the GD fair.
Well, he, he sent a spreadsheet that shows further violation of the contract. And it, the contract says that all funds are to be used for the fair and the fair only. And in the reconciliation, he said, and he shows he's using funds to the food trucks, which that fund is for the fair. And he shouldn't be in their mingling funds. So I would like a motion from someone to request or see if the board wants to, well, I'd like a motion from the board to request all records for, for the entire time we've been giving, making donations to the Fair Association.
How long have we been, this is Alderman Cleaver, how long have we been giving funds for that?
I believe starting 2016 and we've been giving $5,000 a year. So we've given a total of $20,000 so far.
And do we know how much it costs, like how much total is spent on the fair each year?
That's what the record should show if we get to see those.
I know for myself, when I inquired about it, I was told around 20,000. So I, I guess my question would be if it's, if we're giving five and 20 is what's going, like the total cost. How would we determine what portion of that 20,000, the 5,000 is paying for and, and can we?
Well, that's what we'll have to see the records to see what we can determine from that. The records need to be odd to see if they have been going to the, to the fair or if they've been used elsewhere. But right now we have, I feel we have definite grounds to question them. We have a a board that's filed with the state as a nonprofit, but yet it isn't. The filings are, are misrepresentation in naming board members. The state requires that they have three board members. And when you're listing board members that don't even know that they're board members, I don't think that meets state guidelines. So we have a board that, or we have a nonprofit that doesn't appear to be registered properly with the state. We have accusations of misuse of funds and we have a breakdown that, that shows that funds are being used for other than the fair. And I think we have a duty as stewards of the city's money to see where the money's been going, if it's been used for, for the, what we're donating it for.
So the records you have right now, that can, that you received, is that all the spending, all the, all the money in, all the money out, or is that just depicting what in theory is the 5,000?
You want to end that again or?
Can you repeat that again?
So, so the, the, the records that you have right now, is that just for last year? And is it just showing quote unquote, $5,000 worth of spending or is it showing all the spending?
So it's everything that's been in and out of, I'm guessing whatever this account is. You know, as I said earlier, obviously with 2020, the fair not actually having been the fair. I think it's probably fair to say there's a lot of probably revenue coming in from sponsorships and definitely expenses that aren't shown. So it 2020, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't know how much you really can take from that. But yeah, I mean, it lists like every expense or revenue from that fund.
It gives a month, I'm sorry, it gives a monthly breakdown of, of income, outgo. It does show outgoing towards the food trucks, like I say, which is not fair, which is contrary to our, the contract we have with the Fair Association.
Are they, are they asking for another 5,000 for next year, for 2021?
No, if you remember around budget time, we actually took that line item out with the understanding being that the money that we paid for 2020 would go forward into 2021. So that's where another agreement would have to be, the agreements are a year to year thing. So that's where we would just have another agreement that would take out the money, but still show the responsibilities of both sides.
Mr. Mayor, this is Alderman Knox. If, if the money was used since we, they didn't have the fair and the money was used for the food trucks, it was put on by the, by the fair board. I don't know, might have to have, you know, ruling from the attorney, but I, I would think that that would fall under the guideline because they were doing what they could to salvage what they had.
The contract is pretty specific. It says all funds are to be used for the fair. It's not a, not a slush fund to be used for, for just whatever they decide to use it for. I, do you have an opinion on that, Mr. Alber?
If the city's looking for a legal opinion, I'm going to give something like that in a closed session. I'm not going to give it in a public meeting. And I haven't looked at this very much, just because I wanted to make sure that we have, you know, the board to go ahead before we spent city resources looking into this.
Okay. Well, my reading of it is, like I say, it says to be used for the fair and the fair only. Like I say, we have inconsistencies. We have a, um, a nonprofit that isn't registered properly with the state. We have a financial statement that says it's being spent on things other than the fair. We have accusations that funds were used for personal use out of that account. And I, I feel we have a duty to investigate those, those accusations and, and and what the money has gone to. So any further questions?
I'm thinking like the food trucks were only this year. So is that relevant in going back and digging other years if that's the part you're looking for?
The inconsistencies, I think, gives us just cause and reason to question everything.
Are you able to say who the accusations were made from? And my reason for asking is because I know there's like a legit, not a legit, don't take that word. There's, I know there's been a spat between you and the Green Valley Board President, I guess if you'll call him. So I, I just am wondering how much of this is coming from personal and how much of it is really there? So if you ask, I'm curious who it came from.
The accusations were made by Ryan and they were made to me before I even, even before the election. I didn't act on him because he said he had proof that he never provided me. So I was just going to let it go until I found out that the Fair Association even, isn't even registered properly with the state. That gave me further reason to, to think that we needed investigation in this.
And by Ryan, are you meaning Ryan, our former city administrator?
Yes, Ryan Hunt. He was on the Board of Directors of the fair. I never asked him if he knew he was on there, but he was one of the first Board of Directors.
And how much resource city money is this, you know, will take to, to go through this? Do we know the time, the resources to do this?
Just what, just what time it takes to audit the records? I don't know exactly what the records are going to be. And we can, we can do that by either forming committee to see if they will do it or else we can have it done by city staff. Unless somebody has a, another suggestion how they would like it ordered. Any further questions?
I think it should be done by someone that has no connection with either one of you.
Don't disagree with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Would anyone like to make a motion? No one's make a motion? I'm disappointed that you don't feel that we should review the city's spendings and contracts, but that's your decision. That being said, I guess we move on to the next item, presentations.
So Jamie, can I just share my screen from here? Okay.
Yes.
Let me see.
Do we have Mr. Shear?
He is not on tonight, able to join us. So I'm going to take the lead for him. Can you guys see my screen? Can you see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. So what I want to present to you tonight is a wrap up on what we started earlier this fall. If you all remember, the process that we started was that first evening with the Board of Aldermen where we sat down and reviewed strengths, opportunities, vision and attributes for the city of Green Valley. Mr. Shear took good notes that evening and the next day we met with the department heads and we reviewed those conversations we had as a group. And as a department head team, we created vision priorities and brainstormed concepts to start addressing what was discussed in the, the board meeting the night before. And from there, the admin team began to draft measurable objectives, which I'm going to share with you in a minute, which laddered up to our vision priority. So the whole goal of this is to ladder up to some bigger, long-term priorities that stretch across several years. Once we had those measurable objectives set, we had each department come up with three to five, six month strategies, which laddered up to those objectives. So as you can see, we're just kind of building up, up the ladder there. And our goal is to begin this implementation in January, so in a couple of weeks. And what we'll do is every six months, we'll review those three to five strategies, strategies that each department has set. And then determine if those are still relative, if they were met, or if new strategies need to be made for the next six months to continue working towards these objectives under the vision. So the areas we have come up with in the vision priorities were economic development, which is more than just bringing businesses in. It's really committing to intentional investments, which will result in prosperous opportunities for businesses and our residents. And I'll talk a little bit more about what that looks like to us here in a minute. I'll break each one of these down a little more. The next one was brand identity and that is Green Valley is a community dedicated to knowing who we are and what makes us unique. And that looks different than just a marketing scheme or a logo or something along those lines. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute as well. And then the third one was community sustainability. And our vision for that is that Green Valley will cultivate a sustainable community structure by fostering a mindset of forward thinking, adaptability and being responsible stewards of our assets. So if we break those down into three to five-year objectives, starting with the economic development, what that looks like is that we've set these three bullets for this objective. The first one is that we will increase the three-year average length that a local business has remained open from what is currently 4.55 years to five years by December 2025. And I know that doesn't seem like a big increase there, but when we made, set these metrics, we really looked at the details and the data and where things were dropping off and I felt like that was a good goal for us to shoot for over the next five years. We will also recruit businesses that are suited to our community to increase the number of local businesses from an average of 288 businesses by 10% in December of 2025. 2025. And then the bottom one on that one is that we will strengthen our general fund sales tax base by 15% by December of 2025. And so some examples, when I talk about the departments, each setting three to five strategies for every six months, some examples of the strategies that were set for this goal. Mr. Murphy and I plan to take the Heartland Economic Development course. It's offered every spring. It's a pretty intense course and it will really get us on the right track to start down that process of guiding through business attraction and helping grow the partnership as well and just learning about more detail for economic development. So that's a pretty intense course. It will be virtual this year though. So it was going to be in person, but it's going to be virtual. And then another example for, for this one, Jamie will be working with the Green Valley Partnership during business license renewal time. She's going to really sit down and work with Tasha, understand what the partnership offers to our business and the community, and then find a way to get that information in their hands. We're already reaching out to them every year for business license renewals. And so if we can connect them with the partnership, which will help in give them resources they may not have now, that will kind of help meet at least that first objective of getting them to maybe stay open longer in the city. Any questions on this first one before we move on to the brand identity? And just remember too, each of these has multiple strategies. So I'm just giving you a few of them to help give a, a little idea of what we're looking at.
Nancy has a question, Teresa.
Sure.
What kind of businesses are you talking about putting in here?
Well, all that will kind of come as we go down the line. So another strategy that we're probably looking at is if you all remember, we did a while back, the guidelines for incentives. So we really walked through, if you'll remember, we sat down and looked at, these are the, you know, objectives that need to be met for us to look at a TIF or these are the objectives we need to look at for this type of incentive. And part of that process was really honing in on the targeted industries that Green Valley would want. And so as a board, that's part of our plan is to come back and finish that project, which will then help us target which businesses we want in Green Valley.
Are you noticing Chuck, uh, business picking up?
Am I noticing businesses picking up?
Yes.
Picking up in, in what manner, Tom?
Making money.
Um, I don't believe we have the avenue for, or checking their financial statuses. I'm sure there are many businesses right now that are hurting because of the COVID.
Yeah, I do too.
And some of that will be tracked too. That kind of goes into that third bullet there. Strengthening our general fund sales tax bases. Our businesses are stronger, our sales tax. If that's part of their business model will increase as well. The next one is brand identity and I want you guys to kind of really stretch your brains on this. This is a, a process that we had, you'll remember from my earlier side, we had several days to come to terms with this concept. But what we've noticed and just a great example is even writing a simple brochure up to take to Green Valley, to market Green Valley out in an event that the partnership might be going to or something. We, and, and you'll notice this too, in the things that we shared that first night in the board meeting, a lot of the things that we love and feel about Green Valley are the same things that everyone loves and feels about their communities that they're already living in. And so the goal with this would to be really define who Green Valley is, what makes us unique and why someone would want to move here, work here, live here, play here. So it's more than just creating a logo or a, you know, typeface for our, for our letterhead, those kinds of things. This is really creating our culture and you'll see this is happening at a state level. It's happening with KC ADC in the Kansas City region. So Ken and I actually just had a call with the KC ADC group last week and they really felt this was laddering up, to use that same term again, to what the region was doing and what the state was doing as well. And regionally, you'll see that coming out with the Charlie Hustle heart logo. That's kind of the brand of KC and the heart that Casey has. And so we wanted to find what that is on a more local level for Green Valley and then really use that going forward. So the objectives for that, it's really kind of starting from scratch on this one because we feel like we have a very undefined understanding of what Green Valley is. And I think part of that is probably because we were such a young or a smaller town that grew up so fast that we didn't have time to naturally create that identity as we grew. But we've got a lot of great things going on here. And so this isn't picking a theme or a, you know, a marketing slogan or anything like that. This is really an organic process to just find what's already here and promote that out in the community. So the first objective, it's going to take a little bit of time and that's just moving from an undefined, non-pervasive understanding of an identity to having a clearly defined, known throughout an attractional place brand by December 2021. And if you Google that word place brand, if you want to learn a little bit more about what that is, that gives you a good idea of what we're talking about. The next one, once we've kind of gotten that in place, we will move from having no plan for this incorporation to a written and defined operational strategy for incorporating the established place brand into all elements by December of 2022. And then the third bullet on this is just moving from having no resources dedicated to the communication of that brand. We don't really have a identified line item in our budget to do that. To having resources that really will facilitate and grow the emotional connection through the brand to Green Valley by December of 2023. So in simple terms to start with this, really we're in an info gathering stage. I told you, we talked to the Kansas City area economic development people. Their team is fantastic and we're a member of that group. And so they're here to help us. And they're also going to start connecting us with some other communities who are on interstates in the region as well and have gone through this process and really have an identity. So we can start learning what that growth looks like in that process. It's also as simple as learning what kind of consultants are out there. If we need consultants, what kind of tools to, this is a very resident in business driven process, right? We need the involvement from those people. And so finding out what's out there to help us get those in process, what our options are, what the costs are, all of those things. And so that's really our, one of our first six month goals is just getting all that information so we can make good decisions moving forward. On that one. So any questions on that one? That one's kind of one of those big figurative things that we're trying to really bring home. My last one is a really heavy one. This is community sustainability in our three to five-year objective. And what this looks like is lots of different things, but a big concept behind this and leading the way on this is that we have all this new growth coming and that's great and we love that. We have to maintain what we already have. So our structure stays strong as we're growing. So our first objective on this is that we're going to move from a 20th century technological mindset to a 21st century mindset to strengthen, maintain and upgrade our infrastructure and systems, providing adequate access and capacity by December of 2025. That's a lot of words. And so when you break that down, you really start thinking about it. It's some of the things we're already looking at doing, you know, we're, we're learning how to read our water meters better. We're exploring options that citizens and businesses and builders can apply online for permits and things instead of having to come into city hall to do that. It's looking at all those different ways that technology has moved and people are living and operating in the world and getting Green Valley built up so that we're on that same platform with other cities around us. The second bullet on that is monitoring systems and standards that support and foster quality development. And we're looking to increase the number of citizens who are satisfied or very satisfied with city planning from 36% to 50%. To measure this, it's going to take a commitment from the board and from city staff to continue to do those community surveys. That 36% came from our 2018 citizen survey. But we'd like to see a big growth on the satisfaction with the way that, that that's going down. And that could be looking at our standards to which we're holding our development to all the way, you know, there's just a variety of things that could go into that one. And those three to five strategies per department address those as well. Third bullet on that is diversifying our general fund revenue. I think we're all aware that property tax makes up a big piece of our revenue at this point. And so we're looking to move from 27.83% of revenues to no more than 25% of revenues coming from property tax by December 2025. That could be looking at growing the sales tax base, which we already talked about. It could be looking at implementing new sources of funds throughout a variety of platforms, just looking so that we're not so dependent on property tax in the future. The next bullet is decreasing our five-year voluntary resignation average from 7.32% to 5% by December 2025. So that's looking at our staff. And so when you think about sustainability, sometimes maybe you don't think about the staff itself. And so one thing we're really looking at is why people are leaving the city, which our average is 7.32% right now. We've looked at other cities across, Kalil has done a great job about pulling the data from other cities and looking at where we're at. And we feel that a reasonable goal to make us in a good spot is to get to that 5% by December 2025. And the last bullet on here is to, going back to the citizen surveys, increasing the number of citizens who are satisfied or very satisfied with communication from the city from what was measured in 2018 at 54% to 60%. And we plan to do this through proactive communication to the community. So some of those three to five strategies from departments that are addressing these community sustainability vision priority. One thing is just looking in general at our capital improvement plan, making that more comprehensive and updating it for 2022 to 2026. And that will really help us have a long-term picture of where resources need to be dedicated so that we can maintain this stable sustainability in the community. Another example for community development on this one is they're going to soon look at adopting a new building code, which will go to that standard and support and foster quality development. And another example, hitting that last bullet, is we're looking at communication via newsletter for residents and businesses. And so if you have children in the Green Valley schools, you know that you get a, I think it's monthly email from the school district right now. We're looking at doing something at least quarterly, probably for our citizens to come from the city as well. And our new website, which I'll talk about a little bit later, is just one way we're going to start growing a database of emails to start communicating with our citizens. So that's really all I have for a presentation. I know that's a lot of information and a lot of data, but I'm happy to field questions now or as we go on throughout the year.
Any questions? Hearing none. Thank you very much for the presentation. Next item is public hearings. First item, Green Valley interchange tax increment financing plan.
All right. Can you see it there?
Yep.
Yep.
Yes.
So I guess to start with, what we're looking here is at the Green Valley interchange tip. So you know that's split up into one part into four projects and then the marketplace tip and its own project. So basically, it's the four corners of the interchange. And for any of you that have been around for any length of time, you know it's had some twists and turns along the way, but things will be going in a better direction now. But by statute, every five years after the establishment of a redevelopment plan, we have to give a, hold a public hearing regarding the plans and the projects that were created. So the idea behind that is we kind of gauge how the project is performing, whether it's over or underperforming, what the projections were for. So as I said earlier, this map kind of helps a little bit, but the movie theater, Casey's, that area is project two, where the quick trip went in and you see the work being done just to the north of that. That's project three, which is the northwest corner. The southwest corner is split up into two projects, one A and one B. So one A is the McDonald's and the Advance Auto. And then one B is the land right now that is undeveloped. And then project four is the southeast corner where the temp stop is located. So you go way back, the marketplace TIF financing district was actually created back in 2010. And at that time was submitted by SG Property Management, Paul Arino, if you remember that name. And then the board in September of 2010 approved that tip plan. Fast forward a few years, in 2013, the plan was amended to divide the project, as I said earlier, into one A and one B and rename the TIF district, the Green Valley interchange district, which also includes projects three and four. As we all know, SG Property Management only completed a small portion of the projects and then ceased development on project two. So going ahead a little bit more, Star Acquisitions then took over the project from SG. And the TIF plan was amended to actually expand the boundaries of project two, so that's the area where the price chopper is. In April of 2020, we adopted the TIF plan and activated projects one B, three, and four. So basically, everything that had not been activated to that point was activated. And then in June of 2012, when you look at project two, we had mid-notes that were issued. They were extended in June of 2015. Then the mid-notes were replaced with mid-bonds in November of 16 for project two. In October of 2012, the Industrial Development Authority TIF bonds were issued for project two. And the TIF bonds were refinanced in November of this year, as you remember, we just went through that process. And with that, the city's appropriation pledge was removed, which was a big relief for us. So when you look at kind of the status of where we're at for public improvements, you can see everything listed out there as far as what was included, which was the Outer Roads, I-70 interchange itself, 40 highway relocation, utility relocation, and utility improvements. The bulk of those all completed in 2012 and 2013. So when we look at project one A, obviously, it's listed as retail space and fast food. So that's the McDonald's and the Advance Auto, and that was completed in 2014. One B, to this point, has not seen any development. But we hope to sometime in the near future see something moving in that project area as well. I will look at project three. The only thing to date that is completed with that was in May of this year, and that was the quick trip. As far as the plan goes, still to come would be retail space, restaurants. And there was a, a line in that original plan for some multifamily. If you remember, when we came up with the plan initially, it was kind of looking at the things that could go in there. And obviously, as we've seen, that can change over time. But it is still in the plan. With project four, the only thing that we've had completed to this point is the temp stop, and that was in December of 2019. When you look at actual costs themselves for one A, one B, three, and four, the actual cost for that was a little over $7.3 million. And then reimbursable cost for those was just under $12 million. So the slide in front of you now for one A, one B, three, and four kind of gives you an idea of what we're actually seeing or what we're getting from that, from the project. So at the top, you see the total TIF revenues. And you know that TIF revenues amongst that is pilots and the eat. So pilots would be payments in lieu of taxes, and then eat would be the economic activity taxes, so the sales tax for that. As you can see, the only one that is actually under 100% projected was the pilot, which obviously we have quite a bit of land still that can be developed in those project areas. So looking at the interchange TIF financing plan, it's our belief and it's anticipated that the developers through proceeds from TIF bonds, private loans, and/or equity will be able to fund all of the redevelopment project costs. And that TIF revenues generated from the project are going to be sufficient to pay any of the reimbursable project costs and debt service. And with project three, if you remember, a CID was just formed there. And that will hopefully produce additional revenues, have it help cover that. And the projects one A, three, and four, you know, we, they are currently developing and meeting or exceeding projections with one B being the only one that really hasn't seen any development to this point. So when we look at the Green Valley Marketplace side of it, so it's basically that northeast corner. Obviously, we have the movie theater, restaurants. We don't have any sit-down restaurants to this point. We have the fast food, the retail space, and the convenience store. So although it looks a little different than what we originally thought when we started going through this process, you know, there has been obviously a lot of activity there. Again, for this TIF plan and project, see estimated project costs, a little under 10.9 million. And then the reimbursable costs below there. So basically, what's still left in that project area would be there's a lot to the south of the Taco Bell, and then the land that's just to the west of Matthews Elementary there. So when you look at that project area there for the northeast corner, again, the numbers end up coming out pretty well. We were at or above in a couple of cases what we were projecting for that, you know. And that's taking into account that we still have additional development that can happen there. So overall, in good shape. So similar to the other project areas, again, we anticipated that developers through TIF bonds, private loans, and/or equity will be able to fund all the redevelopment costs. And that TIF revenues are sufficient to pay those. The TIF and mid obligations were issued for that project to finance some other reimbursable project costs. And we, the city or the TIF commission may, if our discretion, decide to issue such obligations in the future. A CID was formed for project two as well to produce additional revenues. And at this point, we believe project two is making satisfactory progress, meeting or exceeding expectations. So again, not really, not a lot of exciting stuff there to read other than the fact that, you know, at the end of the day, we're 10 years down the road and we actually have a project that, although there is still room for growth, it is performing and performing well. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer myself or Stephen.
Any questions? Hearing none. We'll move on to Missouri Man-made Marijuana LLC conditional use permit.
Mayor and members of the board, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Trozen.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Missouri-made marijuana is requesting a conditional use permit to operate the medical marijuana manufacturing facility. This is on the same site that the Board of Alderman approved a conditional use permit to operate a medical marijuana cultivation facility. The site plan that's before you is for phase two. There's two phases to this project. Phase one consists of one building, which is building number one. And phase two then consists of three buildings, building one, building two, and building three. The differences between the cultivation facility project and now the manufacturing project is with the interior drives. In the cultivation project, the interior drives for the cultivation project proposed a circular drive within the interior project. And now, as you can see, we're basically have a all-the-way-around the project and then just a one-pattern drive-through. And then the other deals with the fencing. In the cultivation project, the entire perimeter of the project, there was a condition in there regarding that the fencing would be a wrought iron or a similar type of material. On this project, request by Missouri-made marijuana, they are requesting that a spiked aluminum fence be along the north property line and along the west property line, but along the east property line and along the south property line, it'll be black chain-link fence. And then all the components to that chain-link fence will also be black in color. The property is Zone District M1. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on November 18. Everything else in regards to this project is similar in regards to the review process that was done on the cultivation project. There are four conditions that are listed as a part of the ordinance for the approval of the conditional use permit. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the conditional use permit. Staff also recommends approval. Are there any questions?
No questions.
Who's overseeing the growth of all this? What qualifications?
I believe the applicant is on the call, so I'll let Mr. Lucas answer that question.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so as far as overseeing, ma'am, could you restate the question, please?
I just wanted to know who would be in control and who would be overseeing the employees?
Oh, the, yeah, so Missouri-made marijuana is owned by a gentleman who has five facilities in, he has a couple of facilities in Nevada, Mr. Black, and then some facilities as well in Arizona. So he has pretty extensive experience in this. And as far as oversight, it's regulated by, very closely by the state. And each year, there's a renewal requirement for the state license or licenses in this case. And the city's imposing the same renewal requirement so that we'd be subject to state inspections and then at any time, you know, local inspections as well. But as far as like day-to-day operations to the business itself, it's a gentleman by the name of Randy Black. He was on the call last week when we had to continue this public hearing, but unfortunately, he was unable to make it tonight.
Thank you.
Sure.
Additional questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to Blue Spring Safety Storage South LLC.
Mayor, I would ask Jamie to kind of go through the process where if there was someone from the public that would like to speak during the public hearing, there is an avenue for them to do that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I wanted to bring this up a little bit ago. Everyone does have the ability to unmute themselves. I can send out something at the end of the discussion part where citizens can comment. Everyone, including people on the phone, would get a ping basically to unmute yourself if you don't know how to do it. So those of you that are on the video chat, you'll, you can just decline it if you don't want to talk. And then those on the phone, it would actually tell you, you know, the host is asking for you to unmute at this time. Press pound six or star six, I think was the quote or the command. So I can do that after this one, and I can honestly do it now if anyone had any comments on the prior ones, but I didn't see anyone unmuting at that point. So we were probably okay on the first two, as there was no one raising hands.
Okay, is there any hand raised on this one?
I don't see anyone unmuting, but what I can do is I can do that little thing now. And if anyone wants to do it, or just go ahead and unmute now if you want to. It let me unmute, so.
Did I hear someone coming in there?
I don't think so.
Okay. That being said, we'll move on to the Blue Spring Safety and Storage, amend the comprehensive plan.
I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Trozen again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board. The purpose of this request is to amend the future land use map titled Preferred Land Use Plan. So you should see that on your screen here. This is the Preferred Land Use Plan that's out of the city's comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan was last updated in August 2014. Now, the, there is a section in the city's code in chapter 400 that allows the amendment to this future land use plan. And it establishes the criteria to review the process. The city's comprehensive plan contains this map, and the, the process includes the, the ability to review the plan and see how growth has occurred within the city in regards to this plan. The city's comprehensive plan that we're basically focusing on in, in this area, if you can see the hand that I'm circling, is approximately 60 acres. That is in this general vicinity right here. So the, the applicant is looking at this 60 acres that is currently designated as business park. And it is making a request to change that designation to the north 17 acres to be single-family residential and contain 73 lots. Then the next section, or in the middle section of the area, to be multi-family or duplex residential. That will contain approximately 8.5 acres. And I have another exhibit here that will show you that. So here's the single family, here's the duplex lots. And then the remaining 35 acres of the tract will remain business park. And that will contain 19 lots for industrial use. So regarding the factors, when considering the amendment to the comprehensive plan in regards to future land use map, since the adoption of the comprehensive plan, single-family development has occurred basically from the west and has been developing to the east. So basically, along this corridor here, single-family development has been occurring. And so this single-family development would be consistent to be allowed to develop from west to east. Two-family development has been occurring from the west to the east. And white industrial development has been occurring and could be continuing to occur from the west to the east and would then be consistent with the long-range plan. east and would then be consistent with the long-range plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on this request. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted five in favor with one abstention to recommend approval. Staff recommends approval to amend the preferred land use map as recommended by the applicant. Are there any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, Alderman Cleaver, is that where it would stop, Mark? Is where it is now, or is there more land that could eventually be developed further east?
It would stop there because the property to the east has already developed.
Okay.
So, this has been developed where Valley Ridge into light industrial, and this is Woodbury, single-family. And to the north here is Woodbury Estates, single-family. So, the change in the future land use map would be consistent then with how the property has developed to the north.
Okay.
Mark? Mark, can you talk a little bit about the concerns with the traffic flows and things like that?
Sure. So, in regards to one of the... If you could see the streets here, this is Woodbury. This is... This would be then the continuation of... Let me flip to another map here. Let me go to another map that might do a little bit better job there. This would be actually Hilltop, continuation of Hilltop here, just to get you a little bit familiar with the streets. This would be High View. This would be Eagle Ridge Drive, and this would be East Kansas City Industrial Boulevard. And then up here on top would be Woodbury. So, some of the concerns would be that were brought up during the plant commission was the traffic from this area up to Woodbury. Woodbury is considered and classified as a collector's street. When we talk about a collector's street, a collector's street is designed and built to collect streets from adjoining residential neighborhoods to carry that traffic to arterial streets. Those arterial streets being Duncan Road and Buckner Tarzney Road. So, in this particular situation, what we tried to do was work with the applicant and developer to eliminate the continuation of a street from Jefferson all the way up to Woodbury so that we separated the land uses of industrial to the residential area, and so that any type of commercial or industrial development would come down to Jefferson Street, and the only things that would go up to Woodbury would be the residential-type uses because we already have Valley Ridge over here to the east that goes from Woodbury all the way down to Jefferson Street. So, all these... The traffic can also go all the way to the west, and there's other streets that intersect that go... Can carry this traffic all the way down to Jefferson Street with the use of Pamela, and then even a little bit farther east of that with the use of Eagle Ridge Boulevard. Does that answer your questions, Robert?
Yeah. And then there was some discussion around putting a four-way stop up there and doing traffic studies, if I recall.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that up. So, as another requirement of this process, we required the applicant to do a traffic generation study. By doing the traffic generation study, it yielded that a four-way stop will be required at the intersection of Whitney and Woodbury. So, we would have then a four-way stop at this intersection right here. And as you recall, the board earlier this year approved a four-way stop at Pecan and Woodbury. So, this will slow the traffic along Woodbury from Duncan all the way to Woodbury with these various four-way stops. Does that take care of it, Bob?
Yep. Thank you.
Sure. Any additional questions? Do we have any pings? Ms. Logan?
I have a question, more so just about... I mean, not so much about approving this or not, but with neighborhoods like this, are we able to... Like, when I went driving through this area prior to these meetings, it's really congested. And are we able, with these kind of neighborhoods, to have any sort of ordinances put in place where maybe parking could only be on one side of the street or something along those lines? I mean, and I'm thinking for two reasons. One, so that emergency vehicles can get down the streets, and then two, so that we don't end up with multiple families living in the single-family homes and having, you know, four or five cars parked on the street at a time in front of one house.
Mark, you want to kind of go through, I guess, the requirements of the process when we look at whether a road can be no parking on one side or both sides?
Sure. So, there is a process where we study, you know, if a street warrants the no-parking requirement, where we look at the traffic, we look at the width of a street. If a street does warrant that, then we can bring that recommendation to the board. The board could pass an ordinance that would require no parking on one side or no parking on both sides. Then that then becomes an enforcement requirement, you know, and puts it then in the hands of the chief and his group.
What kind of things would have to happen in order for that to be brought before the board? Like, just complaints from residents in the area or...?
Typically, typically that's driven by complaints or from law enforcement or first responders. You know, we were... An example of that was on Pamela. Some of the first responders had concerns with... We had some businesses that were parking on both sides. So, our city engineer studied the amount of traffic that was parking on both sides, the width of Pamela, and it did warrant the need to put no parking on one side of the streets. We brought that ordinance before you, and currently no parking is allowed on the west side of Pamela Street.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mark Ken, whoever, the Alderman Knox. Duplexes and multi-family dwellings just give me heartburn, and one reason is it really taxes our infrastructure, and just from my own knowledge, on a duplex, when we connect to the water, are we charging one connect fee or two? And what's this doing to us on our infrastructure?
Yeah, I mean, I can answer, but Mark could too. So, typically on any duplex, there's one connection to the main, and then off of that, generally there's two separate meters where each side is metered individually.
So, we're only getting a connect fee for one? City charges a connect fee to go to the... Hook to the main, correct?
Yeah. We get a fee for an additional meter as well.
Okay.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to... The...
Mayor, before we move on... We should probably ask one more time if anybody from the public has pinged in.
Oh, sorry. Ms. Logan, has anyone dinged in?
Everyone has gotten the notice if they want to ping in at this point, so nothing.
Thank you. Next, I am Blue Springs Safety Storage, change in zoning request.
You know, he has done such a fantastic job to this point, and I think we're just going to let Mark do it again.
Thank you very much. Well, this kind of falls in line with the last public hearing, so as Mr. Mayor, as you introduced, the applicant is Blue Springs Safety Storage South. They're in turn requesting then a change in zoning from District M1 Light Industrial to District R1 Single Family. That would be the top northern part of this property here, the 16.57 acres that will then be for the proposed 73 lots up here. Then the request here would be for the change in zoning from the M1 to the District R2 Duplex Residential on the 8.44 acres. The remaining 35 acres here will remain zoned M1 Light Industrial for those 19 lots. So, as we went through the process of doing the amendment for the comprehensive plan, if the application for that is approved, then the... This proposed request to amend the... Or change the zoning would then be consistent with the comprehensive plan as far as the future land use map. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on November 18th. The commission voted five in favor, zero against, and one abstention to approve. Staff recommends approval as well. Just want to point out again that the change in zoning to R1 would be consistent and would be adjacent to property that is zoned R1 to the north as well as zoning that is R1 to the west. These change in zoning to R2 would be consistent with the R2 zoning to the west, and the leaving it R-M1 zoning would be consistent to what is already zoned M1 to the west as well as M1 to the east. Are there any questions?
This is Alderman Cleaver. Do we know the typical price range of the single-family homes?
I know the applicant is on the line, so I will defer that to them.
Okay.
Good evening. Everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Brian with Blue Springs South there. Just like we've done there with the single-family homes that you have to the west, you know, homes are, you know, ranging like 225, 250 right through there and going up from there. That's where we were at in similar price point a couple of years ago. They are... Everything's ticking up, but those homes, you know, probably going to come in right around 250, a little bit more.
And is, you know, on the duplexes, was there any... You know, I guess my challenge or my concern is 64 duplexes coming into this area. Was... Is there a thought, reason why there's so many instead of single-family homes?
Well, with the duplexes that we've put in so far, occupancies have been very, very good, so people are looking to, you know, locate in the city of Brain Valley, as you know, they have a couple of different projects, and there's kind of a mix. You know, we have, of course, the single-family homes starting around 250, and then, you know, as you go into some of the other neighborhoods, you're up in the 300 price range. Now, with the duplexes, as a multi-family component, you know, they've remained consistently occupied and are doing well. So, you know, I don't know if the people are, you know, going with that product and then moving up into the single-family homes from there, but that's really our thought is, you know, the city of Brain Valley continues to be a place that people really want to live, and, you know, the different products that we can offer, and, you know, that's one that has done well.
Are these properties going to be a mixture of rental and ownership, or will they be all rental?
Historically, so far, the duplexes have been all rental right there, and then, you know, the single families are most likely owner-occupied.
And with the duplexes that are all rental, are they one owner or are they multiple owners and just renting them out?
Typically, you know, previously we managed them. We now work with a different group as far as managing some of the duplexes there. I would imagine that that model would continue, so, you know, it wouldn't be multiple owners, you know, of those multi-family properties, which does allow to keep everything maintained and keep everything consistent.
So, the developer builds them and then sells them to an investment group, and then you manage them?
You know, as far as, you know, those ones right there, I do not know what the goal is as far as with the management group, but I would imagine that's correct.
And so, I guess you have studies... I mean, we got 180 apartments going in, and now we're talking rentals. Now, we're talking 64 duplex rentals going in, and so your studies show that that's supporting?
Yes, absolutely. So, as you're aware, of course, we have 154 of our apartments there in, you know, the Old Town Lofts there, and then with these, you know, we really believe that those products are all going to do very well, and our studies and, you know, our history with the duplexes in this particular case have shown that they do well, and they're something that's greatly desired in the city of Brain Valley.
So, you feel like more people want to rent than to buy? I mean, I guess my question is, you got 32 plots, lots for development for multi-family duplexes instead of building single-family homes?
Yeah, you definitely have different markets there. With the duplexes, for example, you know, we have a certain segment that is, you know, going to be on a temporary basis, live there for a year, and then buy a home hopefully in the city of Brain Valley. But you also have people downsizing the other way. You have, you know, folks that are, you know, at a point where they want to go from the 2,500-square-foot home, you know, to a maintenance-provided property, something like this, that, you know, that's something that, you know, again, in the city of Brain Valley is what people are looking for.
And how many bedrooms will these duplexes be?
The... Those are three-bedroom, you know, the current model that we've been, you know, building there are a three-bedroom, two-bath, single-car garage, and these are, you know, they're tile floor, they're granite countertops, they're upgrade fixtures and amenities and stuff like that in the property that, you know, people, you know, it's a nice home.
And what... The ones that are already existing, what are... What is the rent going for in those?
I apologize, I do not have that. I don't have that. You know, my side of it's more the development side, I don't do the marketing. I apologize. I can get that information, but I just do not have it right now.
Okay.
Have you looked at any other scenarios to having less multifamilies?
With this particular project, you know, it's just very natural to continue, you know, through to the end of what's already been done. We did look at several different layouts of how to... We did look at several different layouts of how to do that. But again, you know, this is literally almost you could copy what's happened to the west and just move over to the east with it, which has been successful and has, you know, created a nice neighborhood there. So, you know, the, the product mix has been successful and been desirable in the City Grain Valley. The way it's laid out has been, you know, good for, you know, basically this type of project. So, you know, as far as the balance, we did put more single-family, of course, than the multifamily. But, you know, primarily just continuing through to finish out, you know, what we have to the, to the west there.
And I guess, Mark, by your traffic studies, the, the current roads, traffic, you know, can handle the influx of, of all these vehicles? Because I figure two vehicles per home, two vehicles per rental property, you know, comes to about, what, 274 vehicles per day? That has the potential of coming in and out of this, you know, development. So, do we see any upgrade, future upgrades that we would have to do from a city side for roads or anything with this influx?
No, there's enough infrastructure as far as collector streets and then the art dealer streets in place and handle this type of development.
Do these houses butt right up against the current existing houses? Is there a gap there?
The homes do continue with similar lots, you know, basically in a straight line to what you have to the west there. And then, there is a rear adjoining property line to Woodbury 6. But you have kind of a jump because, you know, Woodbury, you kind of access from, you know, differently until you get to the, the edge of the development there.
I was talking about the houses to the west on Eagles Ridge near, they're, they're right up against this property, aren't they?
Correct. This is very, very much seamless, you know, continuing with the, the neighborhood to the west. It just, you know, is a continuation of exactly how that's laid out.
Yeah. But I mean, there isn't a, a empty gap between them now. They'll, they'll actually connect to the existing houses, right?
I, I believe, correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
This is Alderman Headley. I got a question maybe for Mark or Ken, and maybe going at it a different tack than Alderman Cleaver. I know in the past, we had concerns about multifamily homes or the, the volume of multifamily homes being built back 10, 12 years ago. Besides this and besides the apartment complex over there where the old Patricia's was, what else have we built of late or had built in, in the city of late along the lines of multifamily? It, it seems to me, I can't, when I can't remember, that there's been a lot probably in the last four or five years, but I could be completely wrong too.
Yeah, the, I mean, basically, what has been built that would be multifamily is older projects that are just getting finished out. So, like in Greystone, you know, like probably four years ago or so, I think those four complexes were finally finished. But, you know, that was a project that was approved back in 2005 or '06. And then, over the last five years, they finished out the duplexes there just south of the railroad tracks, just to the west of Snibar. So, really, just this development that we're looking at here is probably the most current duplex development that, or any kind of multifamily that we have. When you look by the airport at Walnut and Kirby, that is approved for that senior living, but that's a planned unit development. So, that's a little bit different. But I think, Mark, that's, that's really it, isn't it?
Right.
So, I know in the past, we had, you know, concerns we're buttoned up against 30-plus percent or more of our homes were multifamily homes. That's, do you guys have those stats now, at least with the current numbers, where that ratio is? I know this is a, it's not trying to be a trick question, I just...
Yeah, so it's not exactly the way you just described it. But one thing that we did was go and look at the census numbers, because they do give percentages for owner-occupied residents. So, these were, aren't completely up to date because it's 2019 numbers. But for Jackson County as a whole, 58.2% is the owner-occupied number or percentage. Grain Valley at this point was 64.6. When I looked at some surrounding cities, Independence was 60.7, Raytown 61.9, Oak Grove 66%, Lake Lautauna 66.8. And the state of Missouri as a whole is at 66.8. Blue Springs is a little higher there at 71. That was the highest of the ones right around us. So, kind of that around mid-60 number is, seems to be pretty average.
So, we're not out of whack, so to speak, compared to our surrounding communities?
That was the best information that we could find. When we pulled the water, the utility billing accounts, it actually showed that our percentage was a little bit higher on owner-occupied. But we don't have any way of comparing that data to other cities. So, we went with the census method to try to give it equal playing field on comparing numbers.
Okay. No, I appreciate it.
And what, what, what do we, what is the city trying to maintain on the, on the single-family and owner-occupied? And do we have a target number? Because right now, you know, we're, we're getting, we're in the 40s, so...
Yeah, so I don't know if it was necessarily a target number. One of the things that we look at, you know, the map that Mark is referring to, that future land use map, when we went through the comp plan update in 2014, it was looking at how land would develop as the city grows. And when you, Mark, if you could put that map back up?
Sure.
I think what you'll, you know, I mean, just kind of the way we are, a lot of that is just single-family growth as we go. I mean, there's not...
So, let me show you where we're talking about. So, Mayor, I think you were talking a little bit earlier about to the west. So, this, this is to the west. This is the single-family to the west. This is to, this is the duplex to the west. This is the 60 acres that we're talking about right here. So, so that, as far as a preferred land use map, this showed the 60 acres as being business park. However, how it's, how it was planned and how it's been developed is the single-family and duplex.
And so, Alderman Knox, when you look at that map, obviously, our city limits don't extend that, that far right now. But just looking at that, the, just the plain yellow color is what is assumed to be area for single-family homes going forward. That more orange look is the multifamily side. So, you know, even how we're saying we want the city to grow going forward, there's obviously, you know, much more single-family than there is multifamily being planned for that. But, you know, I think one of the, those numbers that I gave, I think, I think it's never a bad thing to compare to where we are with neighboring cities, you know, with a lot of things, to make sure you're not necessarily out of whack with what others are doing. And I think to this point, we're, we're still fairly close on that.
Yeah, I agree with the checking everything around. I just want to see Grain Valley turn into a transient city before they're here for a year or two and gone.
Yeah, and one of the things that's kind of been a, a little shift, I guess, over the last, I don't know, five or at least 10 years, you know, is the rentals that you see in single-family homes. I mean, it used to be before, if you were talking about rentals versus owner-occupied, the rentals were more on the, the duplex side of things. You didn't see as many on single-family homes, but that's not even really the case now. You know, if we, you can approve a residential subdivision, you know, but really barring an HOA that says you can't rent it out, just because it's single-family zone doesn't mean that it's owner-occupied. It still could be rental. So, that's something that's always gonna fluctuate a little bit. But, I mean, I think we have a pretty good balance right now with where we're at.
Okay, that's all I had.
No additional questions? Ms. Logan, are there any, are there any beings?
Hello?
Yes.
Ms. Logan, were there any beings?
Yes, someone is responding now, but I don't know who it is. If you...
Scott Schaefer.
Okay.
I sit on the Planning and Zoning Board, and we did have a couple assistants that had concerns about the housing that was gonna happen through there. And Mark and Dick both came out, and myself, Justin and Tyson, we met with the homeowners on the property and visited with them. And I just want to say thanks to Dick and Mark for coming out and, and, and soothing their concerns. And they did a great job, and they represent our city very well. And that's, thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
No other beings?
No.
That being said, I'll close the public hearing. Next-door business resolutions. First resolution, for, for considerations are 20-54. Do I have a mo, motion?
I move that we approve resolution number R20-54.
We have a motion. Do I have a second? Any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, we currently are in an agreement with Oak Grove Animal Clinic for our pet needs. And this would be exercising a one option that was in that original agreement. Staff is recommending that we do exercise that option.
What does Ken say?
Well, this was the recommendation from the police department, which Mr. Tuttle is a part of.
Right.
Yeah, he was okay with it.
No additional questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Hearing none, motion carries 6-0. Next-door business, next resolution, R20-55. This is a resolution, contract with the Grain Valley Systems, I'm sorry, with the Grain Valley Schools to provide meals for senior luncheons.
Mayor, I move we approve resolution R20-55.
I have a motion to, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Stratton. Any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, this is kind of a housekeeping item, and this is us hoping that 2021 brings something a little better than 2020. But this is just the agreement with the school district. You know, we have the senior lunches. The school district provides those meals, and then we pay a set amount for those. So, this is just a, would be what's gonna be a yearly update going forward.
No further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Hearing none, motion carries 6-0. Next resolution, R20-56. It's a resolution to write off the doubtful utility account balances. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number R20-56.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
That was Alderman Stratton. All right, all in favor, or I'm sorry, any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, I was gonna have Mr. Craig just go over what this is, because I think this might be the first time for at least one, maybe two of you.
Mayor and board, that is a resolution that writes off old uncollectible water and sewer accounts that have been sent to collections or declared in bankruptcies for 2016. The total amount is for $14,842.01. The accounts listed with the resolution, as I mentioned, have been sent to collections, and the money due on those account is over four years old. We are just trying to more accurately report the accounts receivable, and this will bring the number down to a more precise figure. It's necessary to write off the bad debt when the customer's account is considered to be uncollectible. Otherwise, we carry a high, a higher accounts receivable balance, and it overstates the amount outstanding with the customers' accounts that will eventually be converted into cash. So, we're just trying to write down some of the bad debt that we've had. We've been doing this for the last several years. And as I mentioned, the total amount's about $14,842. The balance or in the expense that we had budgeted for was for $40,000. We had previously been doing two years' worth. This is just one year. We're catching up after we've been doing it for a number of years.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries 6-0. Next item, resolution R20-57. This is contract Grain Valley Assistance Council to ride home delivered meals. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number R20-57.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Headley, I believe?
Yes.
All, any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, this is another yearly thing. Every year with the budget, the board approves funds to the Grain Valley Assistance Council for the home-delivered meals program. So, again, this would just be another yearly agreement update.
Any further discussion?
Ken, aren't you coming out even? On the meals to the seniors, aren't you coming out about even?
No, this isn't for the senior lunches. This is for the, the meal delivery program council does. So, yeah, there's no, it's not a coming out even thing on that. It's, it's something that we pay for.
Well, I pay $40 a week.
Yeah, this is, it's, there is an expense to it. This is our, I believe it's $8,000 is what we do per year for this.
Makes sense.
No further questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries 6-0. Next item, business ordinances. First ordinance of consideration is bill number B20-37 for second read. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I believe, under our new program, I'll go ahead and just read the ordinance because we voted at the last meeting to bring it forward for the second reading, and then we can do the acceptance. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Oh, I'm sorry, I read that as a first read. I'm sorry, yes.
Yep, the second reading. So, Mayor, this is the second reading of bill number B20-37, an ordinance amending the budget of the City of Grain Valley, Missouri for fiscal year 2020.
Mayor, I move that we accept the second reading of bill number B20-37 and approve it as ordinance number 2530.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Cleaver. On, any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, as we talked about the last time, this... Mayor, members of the board, as we talked about the last time, this is just the yearly budget amendment that accurately reflects what our true revenue and expenditures were for the year.
No further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, the roll call.
Alderman Bass?
Sorry, yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Headley?
Yes.
Alderman Stratton?
Yes.
Alderman Knox?
Yes.
And Alderman Totten?
Yes.
Motion is approved, six zero, Mayor.
Next item of business, for first read this time. I, our ordinance B20-38.
Mayor, I move that we make the first reading by title only of bill number B20-38.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, this is just the ordinance that coincides with the public hearing for the conditional use permit for the medical marijuana infused products manufacturing facility.
Any further discussion? Leave any to read? Is that correct?
Well, we need to vote on the first reading, and then I'll read it.
Oh. Okay, my, all right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero.
Mayor, this is the first reading of bill number B20-38, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a medical marijuana infused products manufacturing facility on approximately six acres.
Mayor, I move that we accept the first reading of bill number B20-38 and bring it back for its second reading by title only at our next regular session.
This is a two reads tonight.
Oh, it's just two reads?
Yep.
Okay, that's right.
So we'll just bring it back for a second reading immediately.
Bring it back for a second reading immediately.
All right, I have. Do I, all in favor, please signify by saying-
You have a motion, but not a second.
My top one.
Oh, you're muted, Alderman Knox. A second.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Alderman Knox seconded.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear that. All right, all in favor, please signify by, or, sorry, any discussion, further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero.
Mayor, this is the second reading of bill number B20-38, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit for a medical marijuana infused manufacturer, medical marijuana infused products manufacturing facility on approximately six acres.
I move, Mayor, I move to accept the second reading, the bill, be number B-20-38, and approve it as ordinance number 2531.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify.
Be rolled higher.
This is a motion. All right, this is a roll call again.
Alderman Bass?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Headley?
Yes.
Alderman Knox?
Yes.
Alderman Stratton?
Yes.
Alderman Totten?
Yes.
Six zero, the ordinance is approved, Mayor. Thank you.
Next item of business, item B20-39.
Mayor, I move we make a motion for first reading by title only for bill 20-39.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten, any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, I'm gonna let Mr. Trozen just give a brief overview of the final plat.
Thank you. The, this is a, to gain final plat approval for the East Kansas City Industrial Park 14th plat. Couple bills down, B20-41, there's an ordinance vacating the 60-foot right-of-way for Jefferson Street and adjoining utility easements. That's basically in the middle of this plat here. What this will do, this final plat will recreate one large lot known as Lot Four. That will be a lot then, that will be approximately 1.15 acres. Property is zone District M1 Light Industrial. The commission at the November 18, 2020 meeting recommended approval. Staff recommends approval.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all signify by, please saying aye. Please signify by saying aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Hearing none, motion carries six zero. Next item of business?
Mayor, I need to do the first reading of that.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Mayor, this is the first reading of bill number B20-39, an ordinance approving the final plat of East Kansas City Industrial Park 14th plat.
Mayor, I move we accept the first reading of bill 20-39 and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
And this will be at the next regularly scheduled meeting, correct?
At the next regular session, yes.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Hearing none, motion carries six zero. Next item of business? B-2040.
Mayor, I move that we make the first reading of title only on bill B20-40.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley, any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, again, Mr. Trozen, can you give an overview?
Thank you. The purpose of this request is to gain final plat approval. Eagle Ridge Estates Fourth Plat, the property is located on the west side of Eagle Ridge Boulevard, where it ends on the west side of the property is Tire Road. The proposed subdivision will contain 12 lots, will end in a cul-de-sac. The Planning and Zoning Commission approved the preliminary plat on September 9. The, the property is Zone District R1. The Planning and Zoning Commission at their November 18 meeting approved the final plat. Staff recommends approval of the final plat as well. Are there any questions?
Hearing none? I lost my place. All in favor, please signify, or, we need to read.
You're, you're at the point where taking a voice vote, please.
All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero.
Mayor, this is the first reading of bill number B20-40, an ordinance approving the final plat of Eagle Ridge Estates Fourth Plat.
Alderman Knox?
He's muted.
Alderman Knox, you're, you're on mute?
Can you hear, I can't hear you, Chad. I can't hear anything. I've lost everything for some reason.
Okay, it's, it's to you for a motion.
On, on, on bill B20-40?
Yes.
Yeah, it'd be a motion to accept the first reading and bring it back for second reading at the, at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, I make a motion, we accept the first reading and bring it back for a second reading at the next regular meeting.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Headley, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries? We didn't need a reading there?
We did the reading and the vote was to bring it back at the next meeting.
I'm sorry. All right, next item of business, B20-41.
I move that we make the first reading by title only of bill number B20-41.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Cleaver. On, any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, Mr. Trozen will elaborate on what he touched on already with the right-of-way vacation.
Thank you. So this is basically the survey for that vacation of the right-of-way. We're vacating the 60 feet of right-of-way. That is basically not, no street has been constructed, as well as the 10 feet of utility easement on both sides. As a part of this process, we, all the utility companies were notified. They responded that they have no objection to the vacation. What this basically does then is pave the way for the developer to proceed with the final plat for the East Kansas City Industrial Park 14th plat, which you previously had discussion on in a previous bill. So are there any questions?
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Hearing none, motion carries?
Mayor, this is the first reading of bill number B20-41, an ordinance vacating 60-foot right-of-way for Jefferson Street and adjoining utility easements.
I move that we accept this first reading of bill number B20-41 and bring it back for its second reading by title only at our next session.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Hearing none, motion carries six zero. Next item of business, item B20-42.
Mayor, I move we make the first reading by title only of bill B20-42.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten, any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, this is the coinciding ordinance to the public hearing that we had earlier about amendments to the future land use map.
No further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Hearing none, motion carries six zero.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the call for nay. Maybe I just missed it.
Yeah, I think your sound didn't come through there. I saw your mouth moving there, but the sound didn't come.
Okay, all, all opposed, please signify by saying nay. Hearing none, motion carries six zero.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, this is the first reading of bill number B20-42, an ordinance to amend the future land use map in, in the 2014 comprehensive plan.
Mayor, I move we accept the first reading of bill B20-42 and bring it back for its second reading by title only at our next regular session.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero. Next item of business, B-43.
Mayor, I move that we make the first reading by title only of bill number B20-43.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Totten, any discussion?
Mayor, members of the board, just like the last ordinance, this is the coinciding ordinance to the zone change public hearing that we held earlier tonight.
Hearing no further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion carries six zero.
Mayor, this is the first reading of bill number B20-43, an ordinance, and ordinance changing the zoning on approximately 16.6 acres from District M1 Light Industrial to District R1 Single Family Residential, and approximately 8.4 acres from District M1 Light Industrial to District R2 Duplex Residential.
Mayor, I move we, that we accept the first reading of bill number B20-43 and bring it back for its second reading by title only at our next regular session.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, that was.
Boom.
Alderman Headley? All in favor, or, sorry, any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, please signify by saying nay. Hearing none, motion carries six zero. That's the last, the ordinances. Next order of business, city attorney's report?
Mayor, members of the board, I just wanted to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Hopefully, 2021 will bring something better than 2020 did. Did want to just make a quick announcement, this holiday hours at our firm, I think, speaking with the, the city administrators earlier today, somewhat coincides with the cities, but we will be closed on Thursday and Friday of this week, the 24th and 25th. We will also be closed Thursday and Friday of next week, the 31st and the 1st. Obviously, we're kind of a 24/7 thing if you really need us, so just call cell phone or email. Cell phone's probably best in an emergency, if you need anything, but we will not be having office hours for the, the, the Eves and holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item of business, city administrator and staff reports?
We'll start with Ms. Logan.
I just wanted to remind everyone that the election filing for candidates for the April 6 election opened last week on the 15th, and then candidates can file up until 5:00 PM on the 19th of January.
Thank you.
And Mr. Trozen, that included a printed report in your packet for community development. And next, Mr. Davies.
Mayor and board, I just want to let you all know that we will be doing our annual Christmas tree drop-off in Armstrong Park like we do every year. The drop-off site is located next to the West Field in Armstrong Park, there off of James Rollo Drive. We'll accept- Um, will accept, uh, these from December sixth through, uh, January tenth. Again, only real trees, we don't accept any, uh, artificial trees. Um, and, um, just wanted to let everybody know about that.
Ms. Ozenball.
Mayor and members of the board, I have three updates for you tonight. Um, the first one, I think you already received an email about, but our website, our new website launched on Wednesday this week. Um, so far, it seems to be running very smoothly. I haven't heard really anything about it, um, in a negative way up to this point, but we'll keep monitoring that and plan to do a bigger, um, announcement or launch about it to the public after the first of the year to coincide with the app, which I'll talk about in a minute. Um, some features, if you haven't been to the, the website yet, some things I really wanted to point out is the news section is a lot more prominent now, and we hope, um, by having pictures and, um, you know, right kind of in the middle of the, the website there, people will see the things we want them to see right away when they jump online. Also, um, easier access, we did, um, a heat map on the old website to see where people were going most often and make sure those were front and center on the website. So things like paying utility bills, um, signing up for parks and recs programs, you'll find there's quick links so you're not navigating three or four times down the website to find those links. Um, also, right front and center, it's easy to find, um, Board of Aldermen information such as agendas and meetings. So we are working to, um, that's one way to kind of address some of that communication we talked about earlier tonight by having those front and center. Also on there is a report of concern option. That wasn't something we had before, but there's a quick, easy form, a resident or business owner can go fill out and that would, um, get an email out to the appropriate staff member to take care of that, whether it's something, um, like a pothole or a street sign that needs looked at or something along those lines. Um, public meeting notices are also on that front page, and it's not on there yet, um, but it's in the process of getting there. I talked earlier about that newsletter we're wanting to form, and it should be front and center on the webpage where people can go to sign up and become part of that newsletter, um, shortly. I mentioned the app, that's also along with the website, another piece of cares funding that we've used to pull an app together. Um, one more way that citizens can communicate with us without necessarily having to come into City Hall and working to move um, on a more internet-based basis when we can. Um, department heads have kind of finished up their review on, on the app itself, and then I have sent the email off to the company we're working with, it's Tyler Technology, who does a lot of our, um, various databases around here to go live. So that takes about a week, and once we go live, we'll, um, have a few people internally test it out, play around with it a little bit, and then, like I said, we'll do a larger packaged push to the public the first of the year to download the app and visit the new website and get signed up for all those good things we've got. Um, the app itself is fairly simple. We tried to keep it simple, so it would be the things that people would want to have a touch of a button and, and get to. Um, so again, easy to pay their water bill from there, basic information for residents to connect with us on local government. Easy ways with a click of a button to call or email the departments or whoever they need to reach that. It will also have a report of concern module on it, which is kind of cool because, um, those will be directed to specific, specific staff members who can then go on and, um, respond to the resident through the app to let them know their issue has been addressed if that's selected. Um, Parks and Rec guide is kind of neat on there. It has maps and can show what amenities are in each park, and so you can look at that right from your phone. Uh, my favorite feature, which we haven't really got to test out too much yet, but we can send push notifications out to the entire group with the app or people in a certain geographic area. So if there's a water main break, we could send it out just to that area of the city where it might affect, or we could send it out to a user group. Or if we're having, um, a city event and we want to notify everyone at the event that something's starting or there's a situation, we can narrow it down to just that event space and people can get the notification on their phone. Um, and this is something that can be developed and will be developed more as we use it, so looking forward to getting that launched. Um, my last update is just regarding the survey on the city municipal complex that was on the ballot in June. So we have closed that survey. The company was hoping for two hundred and fifty responses and we landed at four hundred and forty-eight responses. Um, that's, the response rate was fairly reflective over the overall ballot results, so, um, that's good news. We did a push, as you'll remember, on social media, we did emails, and we put things in the water bills as well, which helped us double those numbers, um, at the end of it. So we're happy with that. There are, some things were not as clear cut as we would like to have seen, and you'll see this as we get the report, the full report back and go through that process, but there's lots of feedback to go through. Um, that survey company is preparing the full report. That will be presented to you all after the first of the year. So, um, you can expect another workshop coming probably late January, sometime February possibly, to start digesting all that. We can make plans to start moving forward with whatever direction is given to us. Any questions? Thank you.
Alright, uh, the only other thing we had was just what our hours are gonna be for, uh, the holidays, so Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, City Hall is closed. New Year's Eve, uh, we will be closing at noon, so just a half day, and then we'll be closed on New Year's Day. Other than that, I just kind of echo, uh, Mr. Lovber's sentiments and hope that two thousand and twenty-one is, we'll just say different at least than two thousand and twenty. I'm not even gonna be greedy. Just means to be different.
May the curse be lifted.
Yeah.
Next order of business, uh, Alderman and, um, report. Alderman Bass.
Uh, I have nothing at this time, other than I hope everyone has a fantastic remainder of the year, and I look forward to seeing everybody in two thousand and twenty-one, hopefully more in person this time.
Alderman Cleaver.
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Headley.
Saying Merry Christmas to everyone.
Alderman Knox.
Uh, I'd just like to say to Teresa and staff, nice job on the website, uh, even those of us that aren't computer great. Uh, I found it very well, so, uh, very usable, so thank you for that, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all you.
Alderman Stratton.
Um, Rick just said everything I was gonna say. I thought the website looked great, and Merry Christmas.
Alderman Totten.
I'm gonna change one word. Instead of a Happy New Year, how about Prosperous New Year, and I think we'll all be happy. And the only thing I have, Shannon, you're not gonna appreciate me, but I've had phone calls wanting to know when our senior lunch is coming back, and I've told them that isn't it all in your hands, and, uh, it's kind of funny, I had three today. So, those old people depend on you for entertainment.
We hope, we hope to have that back soon.
Okay, have a prosperous new year and a Merry Christmas.
Next order, Mayor's report. Um, this is the close of my first calendar year, a short one because of the, um, problems with COVID. Um, I want to thank everybody for their cooperation, the board, city staff, the attorney. Um, I think we've made a lot of progress. I think we can keep making progress. Um, I have a special personal recognition, I'd like to, um, congratulate, or thank, uh, um, Mr. Davies. Um, I'm not exactly sure how long it's been, but he's been, uh, volunteering a full day of his time, I think, for about the last ten years. Um, driving the Santa bus, he's been a great help, and I certainly appreciate all his efforts. I tell him that each year after he's off, but I've never recognized him publicly, and I really appreciate it. And, uh, happy, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and hopefully we're through this kind of stuff we've been dealing with this year somewhat. Um, I understand there is a, um, need for an executive session.
Uh, there is, and it'd be under item one.
Do I have a motion to adjourn the executive session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second. Second.
Second, Alderman Stratton. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Mayor, before we vote real quick, I just wanna, uh, make it clear for the record that this will be in an executive session under, uh, section six ten point oh twenty-one one of the Missouri revised statutes for legal actions, cause of action litigation, uh, uh, items, and to speak with the city, uh, the city's attorney.
Okay, thank you. Alright, I has a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 This, sorry, guys, this is a roll call.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Alderman Bass.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Headley.
Yes.
Alderman Knox.
Yes.
Alderman Stratton.
Yes.
And Alderman Totten.
Yes.
Alright, just a second, and I will get that sent over to you guys.
Executive session, uh, reopen, um, regular meeting. No further business, motion to adjourn. Or adjourned.
Merry Christmas.
Alright, see you guys.
Merry Christmas, everybody.